Good evening, welcome everybody. We love a full house here at the Town of Gilbert. So, thank you all for being here. And we love kids in Gilbert. So, we're really grateful that we get to honor a lot of our students this year, this month. Excuse me. So, we have a really incredible team here at the Town. And I'd love to introduce them. We have our Vice Mayor Eddie Cook, Councilmember Bridgette Peterson, Councilmember Scott Anderson, Councilmember Jordan Ray, Councilmember Amy Entes, the newest Councilmember for us. And I know Councilmember Jared Taylor's around here somewhere, but he might've gotten caught up in the hall. So, he'll be here in just a second. We do this once a month, and it really is a highlight for us. Oh, does she want the mic? I can give it to her.
You're too loud.
I always tell people, I'm like, "Guess what? This is Gilbert. We're all about the families." So, we don't mind at all any noise that comes from the kids. All of them. Let them come. Um, where's Valerie? Valerie, can you go to the next slide? Oh, you have it. We'd like to thank one of our sponsors tonight. Has anybody ever been to Sal's Gilbert Pizza across the road? Yeah, they're pretty awesome. Anytime you put pasta on top of pizza, I'm all in. So, we'd like to thank Sal's, the community partners that they are. They're a really incredible group, and they give back in a ton of ways. So, I'm always happy to promote Sal's. We also, in addition to loving our kids in Gilbert, we love, love, love our teachers, and our staff, and our administrators. I know a lot of them are standing up around the edges, and some are seated here. If you are a staff member, a teacher, or an administrator for our schools, or part of our superintendency, will you please stand and be recognized? Or raise your hand? Chad, I see you. Raise your hand. Alright. I need a helper. And you're really cute. Come here. What, do you mind helping me? Can I get your sister? Come here. Come here, come here, come here. I mean, you're all really cute, but look how pretty she is. Tell us your name.
Athena.
Athena, how old are you?
Seven.
Seven, that is so fun. Are you in second grade? Awesome. That's so cool. Okay, Athena, here's what we did. All of the teachers that took their time to fill out an application for a student, their names are inside this bucket. And we were wondering if you would be okay if you picked out one of the teachers so that we can give them a $25 gift card to... Where's this one to? Sal's Gilbert Pizza. How fitting. Okay, can you handle it? You're in? Alright, pick a name. Thank you. Alright, let's see who this is. Is Mrs. Willis from Val Vista Lakes Elementary here? Mrs. Willis? Maybe she already started her quick weekend away, and that's okay too. We'll make sure Mrs. Willis gets this. So, thank you. Thanks for your help, Athena. Sorry, Vice Mayor, we're making you run. Okay, we have two announcements that we want to make tonight. The first one is specifically for our high school students who may be here, but also if you're in junior high and you think you might want to, in the future, be part of our Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. Applications are starting in May. It's a year-long program. We take sophomores and juniors in that program, so people going into those grades. And so, please, please apply. We like representatives from all corners of Gilbert. And it's not based on grades, it's not based on your long list of activities that you participate in. It's based on us trying to get to know you and make sure that we have a great representation of our Gilbert youth. Good opportunity, and it looks amazing on your resume. So, we like doing that for our students. Oh, and Bridgette?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We have two sister cities here in Gilbert. One's in LaShawn, China, and one's in Antrim, Newton Abbey, Northern Ireland. And that group, the Gilbert Sister Cities Committee, is holding a Mother's Day Tea on Saturday, the weekend of Mother's Day, with great treats, and tea, and lemonade. And I will be a guest server. If you are interested, tickets need to be purchased ahead of time. There's limited seating, so please take a look at this slide, and look up Gilbert Sister Cities online. And come and join us for that tea. And Mayor, before I give you the mic back, I'm gonna ask this crowd if they will help us celebrate you, because we don't meet again, and you have a big birthday coming up in nine days. Mayor Daniels will be 40. So, could we ask... Excuse me? We need to... So, I'm gonna ask this crowd if you can help us celebrate her, and sing "Happy Birthday" to Mayor Daniels. Ready? Go!
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Daniels. Happy Birthday to you.
It's extremely hard to surprise this mayor, because she knows everything that's going on. She had no idea we were gonna do this.
Yeah, so if I'm... I usually don't get embarrassed very easily, but that worked. So, thanks, you guys. Yes, it's a big birthday. When I started on council, I was actually turning 30, and now I'm turning 40. And so, it feels like a really fun decade I've been able to spend with the Town. And it really is the best job in the world to be able to serve this community. I pinch myself every day that I get to do it, and work with these incredible people. So, thank you. That was really sweet. Alright, now, to the reason you're really here today, and that's to celebrate our students. We do this really efficiently and organized, so we will just lay it out for you. All of our elementary school students who are from either Ashland Ranch Elementary all the way down to Islands Elementary, so A through I, if you are a student from one of those schools and you're our Student Citizen of the Month, come on down and line up with Councilmember Ray. As he's coming down, I want to introduce... Or as the students are coming down, I want to introduce Lauren. Lauren is from our digital team. She's amazing. Lauren, wave your hand. She's got a camera around her neck. She's gonna take great pictures for you tonight that will be available both on Facebook and on Flickr for your use. You're also, obviously, more than welcome to take a picture with your own camera, and this is the right area to do that at. So, as we get to your student, this might be a good place to come down. Just know that Lauren gets first dibs on the pictures, and you're up next. Alright, I think we covered it all?
You did great.
Here we go.
I think we're ready to go. Alright, from Bridges Elementary, we'd like to invite Isabella Capato. And we have... And we have another student from Bridges Elementary, Aslyn Openshaw. From Brook Elementary, Miley RC. I have to be agnostic and neutral. From Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Nicole Hernandez. From Centennial Elementary, Ellie Shama Rodriguez. From Charlotte Patterson Elementary, Chase Stover. Hey, come out of the crowd. From Edgewood High School, Alana Sur Ruby. From Gateway Point Elementary, Elizabeth Franklin. Mayor. From Gilbert Elementary, Jorge Ortiz Rivera. From Higley Traditional Academy, Sarah Welsh. And our last school in Group 1, from Houston Elementary, Valu Hea.
Alright, Group 2 is the rest of our elementary school students. So, all the rest of you elementary school kids, come on down. Also, we know that it might not be a school night, but everybody's got a busy life. So, if you do have to leave after your child gets their award, that's okay. We're not offended. And we'll just do a little swap. Plus, there's people that might wanna find a good seat. There's some down here, it looks like.
Oh, is that what it is? I think it's special. Alright, for Group 2, Mayor. Oh. Alright. Alright, from Mesquite Elementary, Cindy Romero Jackson. From Neely Traditional Academy, Wake Forsgren. From Oak Tree Elementary, Vee Daip. Vee Daip? Vee Daip. From Patterson Elementary, Kaylee McKenzie. From Pioneer Elementary, Alana Soto. From Playa del Rey Elementary, Peyton Wiley. From Riggs Elementary, Alexandra Anger. From Santana Elementary, Sydney Becetta. From Settlers Point Elementary, Zachary Schwartz. Zack, well, we can go with Zack. From Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Silas Surmer. From Spectrum Elementary, Ramon Gada. From Town Meadows Elementary, Aiden McLaughlin. From Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Kellen Everett. From Weinberg Elementary, Brooke Brennson Lee. And our last school for Group 2 is from Weinberg Elementary, Madison Reynolds.
Last group tonight is our junior high and high school students. So, while they're coming down for their awards, we just want to remind you all also that next week is Kindness Week in Gilbert, Arizona. If you Google "Kindness USA," guess where?
Gilbert.
Gilbert. We're really proud of that. So, find ways to spread kindness as much as you can next week, and we'll invite these tall youth down.
Alright, Mayor. From Campbell Verde High School, Blake Blanton. From Canyon Valley High School, Madison Mothership. From Cooley Middle School, Josiah Salgado. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Cameron Edenville. From Greenfield Junior High, Hall Jolo Quazima. Harazma? Where's staff? From Higley High School, Ethan Kinderly. You know, the mayor loves basketball, so... From Mesquite High School, Gabriela Rodriguez. From Mesquite Junior High, William Cooks. Okay? From Mesquite Junior High, Alexander Soto. From Payne Junior High, Olivia Davis. From Payne Junior High, Maya McLaren. McLaren, okay. From Perry High School, CJ Parisian. And our last school for Group 3, from South Ballet Junior High, Brianna Chiazzo.
Alright, that does conclude our Student Citizen of the Month portion of our meeting, and we will start the agenda for our council meeting in just a couple minutes. Thank you all for being here.
With Paul Rodriguez, who is taking financial responsibility for Cliff. And we decided that the most compassionate decision would be to humanely euthanize Cliff. I strongly feel that Cliff was suffering and would have continued to do so despite treatment, even with aggressive treatment to both his oral cavity, which probably would have included full extractions, and his eye, which would have probably necessitated removal of the eye. He would likely require long-term medications, and his prognosis for a good quality of life was guarded at best. I'll have more to say about this at the next meeting. My three minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. At this time, we move to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, we're going to pull two items, Item Number Five and Item Number Fourteen. With that, I move that we approve Agenda Item One, Two, Three, Four, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, and Seventeen.
Second. Thank you. Noting that there have been some changes prior to this meeting on Agenda Items Four and Five, language changes. Four, I guess, specifically.
And those were posted, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That takes us to Agenda Item Five.
And Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, the Agenda Item here is authorizing, if I could just take all of them together. The total is, I don't know, $65 million around if you add them together, maybe a little bit more. Topic for those following is the Gilbert Public Safety Training Facility, kicking off really some of the larger expenditures here, and have repeatedly expressed concerns on the price. Certainly agree with the need and the opportunity that we have to build for the future. Don't disagree with that. Just continue to be concerned about the costs that are much, much higher than market rates for construction of facilities. I know we've received some emails saying you can't compare, you know, this to that. And what that's really saying is like you can't compare red delicious to golden delicious, right? But some people are mixing that up to saying you can't compare apples to oranges, right? You actually can compare costs, and the costs as you compare them to other projects are quite high. And I think in our best interest, you know, if we build this to market rate, we have about 177,000 square foot. Market rate for something like this could run around $200,000, excuse me, $200 per square foot. We talked to contractors, and that would roughly put this around $35,000, $36 million if you do some of that math. This is coming in at 80, right? So we've talked a lot about that. The math still holds as you actually compare with other construction projects, and those comparisons are valid. I just don't think we should be putting that much. We should definitely have this in our community. It is definitely a need and a benefit. We just don't need to spend this much. So I'm not going to be supporting this tonight, Mayor.
Any additional comments from council? All right. Seeing none, we will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Five, but there's two changes that we need to make here. So on Page Nineteen of the contract, the corrected amount is going from $1 million to $1.5 million for worker compensation insurance. That's found on Page Nineteen of the contract. And then the second change is found in Attachment E on Page 166. The word "rolling" is struck from the language, and that section should now read Contractor Controlled Insurance Program, CCIP.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item Fourteen.
Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. A couple of things on this. Number one, there was some really great work with the assumptions going into this. For those following, this has to do with system development fees. Philosophically, Gilbert has growth pay for growth, and this is one of the mechanisms that does help us do that. There's three big issues that still persist in this that I vocalized before. I'll just outline them here, and then we can move to a vote here on that. Number one, the people actually that are going to be paying extra and more for this are not going to be the ones benefiting. I outlined that before because it's actually the ones on the firehouse side, and the connectivity between Ocatillo is really the issue. So there's a problem with who's actually benefiting for who's actually paying, number one. Number two, the allocation of the funds are almost exclusively, at least on the roads, are going to the bridge. I just think that that's a misallocation. I think that some should. I think we can value-engineer that down, but we have other priorities as well as the bridge to take care of in our community, so that's a concern. And then also, I just still don't know if this is fully conforming to the requirements that we have, that the people who pay these FDFs need to benefit locally. It needs to be fairly local to where they live. And people in North Gilbert that are paying for things in South Gilbert, I don't believe that that is consistent with the way that this is supposed to be working. So with those objectives, I still struggle with this and will not be in favor tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Councilmember Anderson?
Just to clarify, I think we took the bridge out.
Yeah, some of it.
Some of it.
Seventy-five percent of the bridge cost was actually removed from the system development fee, and we did that prior to last council, during, excuse me, during the last council meeting. So this is 25% that's left in there that we are attributing to growth specifically. To clarify. Any other additional comments from council? All right. We will entertain a motion.
Mayor, we do have one individual that would like to
Forgive me. Yep.
...speak to us. If we can invite Mr. Kevin Bishop to the podium. Kevin, if you can identify yourself and place a residence, please. Thank you. And you'll have three minutes to speak to us.
I won't take that long. Kevin Bishop, I live about a mile south of here. I think that the council doesn't get enough appreciation for what you do. And so first of all, I'd like to thank you for the tireless service that you provide to our community and the relationship that you forged with business in the community and me personally in the community. My concern about the system development fee is, you know, we moved here in 1995, great place to live, but there wasn't much in the way of business. It seemed like it was a bedroom community to Phoenix, which was fine, and I thought that's all Gilbert would ever be. But through the town's leadership, it's become a place where you can work, too. And so we moved our business here in 2007, and we love it. My concern about the system development fees is the impact on business. And I read the analyst report, and I didn't see a risk analysis for what would happen if people pumped the brakes and go, whoa, it's now become expensive to locate our business in Gilbert. So I just, that's my only comment, is I just want us to be cautious. The other comment I had is I'm concerned about the parks portion because I struggle with that in general because I don't see where businesses derive any benefit from a park system development fee. I think that both of these costs are costs that are applicable to all residents within Gilbert, and I feel like maybe an undue or unfair portion is being assessed in this concept to business, and so I just ask for your consideration. Clearly, I support whatever decision you come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And thank you for your work on the Chamber Public Policy Committee. I know that's a lot of effort, and a lot of great people put a lot of good time in that, and I see our chamber president here as well. So thank you. I also want to recognize Jackson Moll from the Home Builders Association, who's here has worked closely with our town staff to make sure that we are definitely using modeling that is consistent. And I know that a lot of information and input has been provided by him and his team as well, so thank you. As well as the Multifamily Housing Association, which I don't see their representative, but I know they've worked closely with our town team as well. Are there any other comments from council on this Agenda item? All right. We will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Fourteen. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-1 vote. Thank you. That moves us to our public hearing Agenda items. Are there any requests from our council on any of the public hearing items?
Mayor, I did not receive any request.
All right. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty-One, and Twenty-Two. I will close the public hearing on those Agenda items and entertain a motion.
And Mayor, I move that we approve Agendas Item Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty-One, and Twenty-Two.
Second. Go ahead. Teamwork. Motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to our administrative items, Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three. Yes, are you presenting for us, Councilmember Taylor?
I am.
A lot of work.
I'm sorry, I'm doing way too much talking tonight, Mayor. I apologize.
We'll pass the mic.
This is Jordan's turn next time. Okay, Mayor, so the topic you've all been waiting for is building codes. Okay, I've got one slide. I hope this isn't too much of an eye chart. Let me give you a little bit of background. Background's on the left. And I'm going to need Scott to be my wingman tonight. Tuesday morning at a basketball game, I got poked in the eye really hard, so everything's blurry right now. And I created these slides, and they're very small.
We'll chalk up your votes tonight to that. I'm just kidding. I'm just giving you a hard time.
All right. That's good. She's got birthday girl. She can make some jokes.
You know, I'm getting my binoculars here because it's so small.
Okay. So, and you don't need to read all this. We have the dates here of all the times we met, okay? The people that participated were from a wide swath of the community. Larry Taylor and his team did a lot of work. Appreciate Larry being here tonight. Kyle's not here tonight, but we also had Dan Dubois from FIRE. I don't know that I see him. Of course, I don't see too much right now, but. Okay, Jackson Moll here. Thank you for your participation. As you mentioned, multifamily housing was at, we had a lot. We also had residents, as you know, the Rays that comment on this regularly, had a lot. One of the things we did initially, right out the gate, was we created a feedback mechanism, a public survey. We opened it for about 30 days, and we extended it for a little bit longer just to make sure everybody had a chance to comment, until we found a lot of repetition, right? Then we felt we closed. Of course, anyone, my personal information, Scott's contact information, others were there. We could take it throughout the whole process. So I don't know that anybody had a chance not to participate in this, I think, which is one very important part of this. What came out of this was a series of reviews. We had, we looked at residential, commercial, and FIRE. And we, I wanted to show you some of the metrics here because when we look at, and you'll see on the dais here, we're not going to go through the details here, but the numbers there, we said what came out of the, now, we're looking at the 2018 family of codes, okay? And we asked staff to categorize them into less restrictive, more restrictive, and brand-new. So you can see the numbers here, how they break out. So for example, there were 13 commercial codes, and we're talking substantive changes, not just wordsmithing. There was a lot of wordsmithing, and I'll get to why that might be important here. But for less restrictive, there were 13 in the commercial book, 28 residential, 42 FIRE. And you can see the others. I'm not going to read the slide. You can see them. I'm probably reading the wrong numbers anyways. Scott, am I doing okay? All right. So one common theme from the stakeholders, and Mayor, you provided some really good direction that we've reflected on regularly, was simplified, unified, and we appreciate that, those comments there. The 2008 codes brought a lot of relief. There was a lot of agreement on bringing those in. The other more restrictive and new codes were things that were presented. We looked at them. Staff did a great job. And here's our recommendations, okay? Let's just get right into that, and then we'll see what other comments we have here, and then we can have some discussion. So one of the things from the feedback related to just definitions, are we all on the same sheet of paper? Do we still, do we have things that are all common, commonly understood in terms of what's used in the field? And so one of the things that we talked, we got some feedback from the field that we need more clarity just in terms of the codes. If you look at the checklist, I don't have that in front of you here, but there's just a lot of referencing going around. So the recommendation that everyone thought made sense was to actually put the language of the reference instead of just the reference, so that those that don't have the codebooks could actually see the exact wording, cut and paste, no interpretation, but just put that there so it's just part of the standard package. So that was one thing that we talked about early on. There seemed to be general agreement on what that would be, to just help everybody understand it, whether you're on the town side or on the applicant side, okay? The second thing that we talked about was, well, do we stay on the 2012s or do we move to the 2018s? And you'll see why we're talking about using the 2018s as the new baseline because the 2018s bring in a lot of relief, number one. Number two, for the non-substantive codes, there's some updated language that would be helpful. So there's not substantive changes, but there's just more current language that we should And so the recommendation is to use that as the new baseline family of codes for the field with a couple of changes, okay? The first one I already talked about, which is to adopt the less restrictive codes on all three families. There was wide agreement on that. That came forward in the 2018s. And just as a reference for those that want the brain surgery, here is what we looked at. You can see on the 11 by 17 page, you can kind of see generally what the topics are, how they're categorized, less restrictive or more restrictive, if you want to look in there, okay? At the top left, it says whether it's IFC, that's the FIRE code, residential code, and commercial, okay? So that was one that everyone pretty much agreed on is, hey, where there's relief, the industry is pretty unified, let's just go ahead and adopt those. And then the second one is, okay, now what do we do with the more restrictives, and what do we do with the absolute new codes? So, well, actually, before I do that, the second bullet, also on the dais here, is copies of what we received from the Home Builders Association and Multifamily Association. And there seemed to be common support in the subcommittee to bring those forward as well. I appreciate Jackson Moll. He did a good presentation in one of our meetings about the work he's done in other jurisdictions, and there seemed to be a lot of support, not just with Gilbert, but other jurisdictions for some of these as well. And most of these, as I, and Larry can correct me here, already are in our code. These are already pretty much supported, so there's not a lot of substantive changes for these anyway. So that's what the second bullet is there. What do we do with the more and the new code changes? So we tried to look at it from a process or a policy standpoint and said, how do we treat these? Do we want to just come forward and just adopt them? That's really the source of all of the discussion last time, all right? So how can we do this in a more organized way? So what we're recommending here is, when we have a new code or we have something that's more restrictive, because it's going to put an additional burden or a cost into the field and time for staff, right? Let's make sure it actually is something that we should be doing. So when staff says this is something we should seriously consider, and I think there are some here that we shouldn't, I'll point those out here in a minute, but they should come forward with a thumbnail cost estimate, a cost analysis, right? How much is this really costing, both us and the field? And then what's the evidence that this, that there's a problem that this is actually addressing? So what we're actually saying is, let's make database, data-driven decisions, right? If this is really something that's going to benefit the town, it should be substantially backed up with data, right? Now, there are, there might be some exceptions to this where there's brand-new technology that there is no data, right? And so we're not saying, don't bring those forward, but just call them out and let us know that this is something. And there's one in here that, the example I keep using is cross-laminated beams, right? It's a new technology. Right now, if somebody wanted to build with that, they would just be told no. But if we bring it forward, there's not a lot of data. It's not necessarily solving a problem. But that's one where I would be open to adopting, even though it's a new one, because it allows the field to bring new technology into the town, okay? And then over time, we might get some data and change our minds, but that would be something that we could look at just on the new basis, okay? So, and the reason why we think this is important, to make data-driven decisions, because there's some things on here that come forward in this new category that make a lot of sense. And if you look, if you take the one, the FIRE one as an example, the, you look on the inside, just visually, you can see that there's a lot of annotations that they're safety-related, okay? That may be new or in the more restrictive. I'm not going to go through the details of it, but I think those are ones that we would want to see as a council, as they're safety-related and where there's data. Let's look at the data to make sure that, you know, we're solving a legitimate problem. But there's some in here that we've already actually accommodated. You can see those in the new and more, so we don't really need to really do anything with those. The 2018s will actually just bring us the new language. We've already treated them. But there's some in here that I don't think we really need or want to. My favorite one to pick on was the crowd managers. Where's the crowd managers? Oh, yeah, it's on the last page. And basically, this would require any church or large facility that has over 250, I think, Scott, to train their ushers on how to manage crowds. So churches or schools or, the intent of it is more ballfields and entertainment venues. That's kind of the intent. But if we adopt it, the plain language would require this for any facility with capacity over 250 to have trained crowd managers. I'm not so sure, if there's valid data for us to do that, let's look at it, but that's one that we probably can hold off on. So that's what we're recommending that we look at in terms of the new and the more restrictive codes, is how we treat those as staff brings forward. What we see as the benefits of that is, number one, we'll immediately have relief because the 2018s are bringing that in, and there's widespread support for all of those. And then we are making data-driven decisions on the new ones, which I think puts us in a really good spot to make sure that they're relevant to the needs of our town. So I'm going to stop at that point and see if my colleagues that are on the subcommittee has any additional comments on that.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilmember Taylor and Anderson and Yentes for participating in this. This is a technical, very technical process, but one that we felt like was really important for us to bring to the forefront, and so thank you for the three of you and the time that you've spent doing that. Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Yentes, anything?
I was very interested when we first started to follow the president's suggestion that for every new regulation, we eliminate two. But I think what we've come up with here is a good compromise. And the reason I know is a good compromise is because we had some participants that seemed to be challenged, challenging virtually everything we were trying to do, but in the end, when we got to talk with them, coming up with this approach, they were, he was in favor of it, very much in favor of it. So I think it meets your challenge that you gave us, and I think we'll have some good results.
Yentes?
I don't have anything more really to add, other than just wanted to thank Larry and his team and Kyle and his team for all the work you put into this, as well as Dan Dubois. So thank you, guys.
I have one question for the group. It's more process. I like, I really like the work that you've done. My question is, are we doing this then in two separate actions? Are we adopting the codes first, or are we going to wait till we've got the data-driven decisions to make some adoptions? I want to make sure I understand if we are doing this two different ways. I just need to, I guess, process-wise, understand our, how to move forward.
Yeah, Mayor, and Larry can speak a little bit more. He and I spoke earlier today, and we were thinking that once they hear the dialogue from council, we'd probably see in a couple of months a first set of recommendations at that point. And I would guess it would be a blend of a lot of things, but he can speak for that. And then if there's some follow-up, we would just see those in the normal course. As we saw tonight, we had some standards updated as well. But Larry, would you want to add to any of that?
Thank you. Larry Taylor, Plenary View and Inspection Manager with the town. Thank you, Mayor and Council, Councilman Taylor. Yeah, my intent would be to, just to be clear, we haven't vetted any of these. We just provided, here are the code changes, the significant changes, and brought them forward without any recommendations that we want to, you know, recommend, you know, adopting this or amending this out. We haven't made any of those. So my intent would be to, after we receive feedback tonight on how to move forward, to bring everything together at one time to say, this is how we would like to adopt the codes. Here's the 2018 codes. Here's our amendments. Here's how we vetted them. I would like to make a comment, and I want to be careful how I couch this because I didn't bring this up in the subcommittee meeting the last time, but as Councilmember Taylor mentioned, we spoke earlier today. But since the last meeting, I've had more and more time to think about just what this means and this data-driven. I just want to make sure we're not setting the bar too high because there are some more restrictive codes that may be very common sense things. And I can give you a quick example. One of the commercial code requirements, I was quite honestly surprised that it wasn't already in the code. If you have a type of business that requires an emergency eyewash station or emergency shower station, the code is now saying if you provide hot and cold water to those, to that station, that you need to provide also a temperature mixing valve. To me, that's a very common sense thing. You don't want to go into an emergency and turn on the water and scald your face just because you're trying to flush your eyes. Do I have data to show there's been an issue there? No, I don't. But that's a very common sense thing. And so I would hope that whatever direction we get tonight for staff, I have clear enough to direction that I know what I can bring forward. Honestly, and again, we didn't talk about this, but we did provide, as Councilmember Taylor mentioned, we did provide a process for feedback, and we did receive a lot of that. However, as we vetted, have vetted things in the past, we've vetted them through stakeholders that are experts and get their feedback. And so now that we have this, these lists that are categorized as, you know, we have this more restrictive list, for example, and new list, I don't know, does it make more sense now to form a stakeholders group? I just throw that out as a suggestion. That's something we've done in the past. We don't have that in this. And again, I apologize for not bringing that up in the subcommittee meeting, but it's something that I've thought about since we last met.
I think the short answer to that question is yes. We always want to involve our stakeholders as we make especially big decisions like this, so I think that's fairly common sense. I don't, so much work has already been done that I wouldn't want to redo a lot of that, that effort, but I would absolutely agree with you that stakeholder involvement will be critical, especially as it comes forward to us, that there is support from those stakeholders as we adopt, so.
Thank you. So I just wanted to make it clear tonight that we definitely are looking for some direction on how to go forward and what we need to provide in the way, when we come back with recommendations, we certainly don't want to bring back recommendations that's going to be controversial or that can't be adopted. But I also don't want to set the bar so high that it's difficult to get anything adopted either.
I'll make this quick suggestion, and that is that, once you have all of your stakeholder involvement, let's have a council study session. Perhaps we can aim for August where we can have just a final dialogue before you present building codes to us. I think we'll be able to alleviate any concern that there would be controversy around those at adoption time by doing it that way. That's all right. at adoption time, by doing it that way, if that's all right. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your work, Larry. Anything else, Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, no, I just, I appreciate that. I hope they know that we want to be supportive and helpful along the way, and there were definitely recommendations, and I should have mentioned this, that would have taken the codes right down to just a checklist. You've probably seen some of the recommendations there. Those were really about residential. This is, this recommendation really covers the whole family. That's why that, I think, one of the reasons why the people that made that recommendation were so much supportive of this, it was definitely a compromise, was because it provides so much relief, that really, it would accomplish the same purpose, just in a different way. And then, the other thing that I think is, some people might ask, why aren't we on the 2012s and just amend out of that? Well, it's, you're almost getting to the same exact thing. If you say the 12s and you amend there, or the 18s and you amend down, you're ending up at the same codes that are in the field. The reason why we tipped to the 18s was because, what I said before, was it did bring forward new language, and there's some internal consistency within the family of code books. So, if like this cross-laminated beam is approved, well, then, the artifacts are already in the other places with updated language. So, I failed to mention a couple of those details that are surely to come up a little bit later on, but I thought I'd just air that. Mayor, thank you for the time tonight to give that report.
Thank you. It was helpful. Any additional comments from council? All right, moving on. Agenda Item 24, Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports.
Mayor, I'll comment on the LDC Subcommittee that Councilmember Ray, Vice Mayor Cook, and I are serving on, and let you know that it is a long, tedious job to go through that code. We don't have the benefit of having a 2018 code to look at, to bring forward. We're really being very deliberate in everything that we look at and how we look at it. We've had feedback from outside entities coming to our meetings and meeting with us. Amy Thames is doing an amazing job keeping it all straight and moving us forward, and I'm pretty happy with where we are, and, but it's definitely going to be several more months before we see the end of that tunnel.
There's no criticism from us. We're really grateful that the three of you guys are working on that, on behalf of all of us. But I think the end result is hugely beneficial to the community, and we really should probably create a schedule that we do this every few years, so it's not such the undertaking that it is yet. It's been 14 years, I think, since we reviewed that, so, thank you. Any additional Boards, Commissioner, Committee Reports? Great. Report from Town Manager on current events?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I wanted to highlight the great work of some of the staff, some of what you took action on tonight, and there's more people involved in this than I'm going to name off, but these are individuals who really played a key role with the Public Safety Training Facility, and we're very happy that we were able to bring that project in on budget in today's construction climate. So, real quickly, Leah Hubbard, David Fabiano, Susanna Struble, Jack Gerak, Chief Solberg, Chief Joe Bush, Assistant Chief Randy Bryce, Assistant Chief Rob Duggan, and, as I said, many, many others, as well as some subconsultants, who helped us stay on top of that design and that pricing all the way through. Next, Kelly Fost, for the great work on the impact fee update. That is a long process and a lot of work, and we are very proud of Kelly, and how thorough and thoughtful she is with those items of great importance. And then lastly, I wanted to recognize the entire wastewater team, that really made us all proud, when they scrambled very quickly to deal with the power outage that occurred at the Greenfield Wastewater Treatment Plant, and they went out and monitored all of our lift stations and all of our manhole locations, to make sure that we didn't have any overages in our system, as Mesa worked to bring in some temporary pumps and get that flow moving again. They took shifts 24 hours around the clock and just did an exceptional job, and as I said, made us all very proud. That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a great team. You didn't hear any complaints at all from our residents, so I think they acted really quickly, and we appreciate that. Any current events from council members?
Mayor, I know that we thoroughly embarrassed you earlier this evening, and had the whole crowd sing you happy birthday, but our staff missed that. We just wanted to wish you a very happy 40th birthday. There's a card and some treats there for you, and... That's good. And it's, what, nine days now? I know that the chamber's been counting down and sending you videos every day, so enjoy those.
I would like to request more time. I didn't realize it was the mayor's birthday.
It's not tonight. You're off the hook. So is my husband, because he would have forgotten, too, so we're good. Thanks to everybody, and I will never forget my 40th birthday, so that's really good. Thanks. Appreciate that kindness. Speaking of kindness, next week, we kick off Gilbert Kindness Week. It's April 22nd, which is also Earth Day, through the 28th, so we're excited to do that. We have some pretty incredible things, including a kindness concert on Thursday evening to celebrate Kindness Week, and we encourage all of our residents to pay it forward. If you Google "Kindness USA," it's Gilbert, Arizona, and so, look us up on the map, and you can see that we are a community of kindness, and I want to reiterate that our staff embodies that on a daily basis. So thank you to each of you for continuing to uphold those high standards in the town of Gilbert. I hear compliments of each of you on a very regular basis, so thank you. You make us all look good, and we really appreciate that. All right. Anything else? That is all tonight. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.